Excuse me, have a roll call by city recorder.
Mayor Rowan Dyke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel. Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst. City Administrator James Fencham.
Here.
You may have noticed that we do have two absences. Our city attorney, Terry Hurst, has had surgery today, I believe, and he will not be here. Mike Hansel has said that he has got another engagement and would not be able to make it, sends his regrets and regards. Approve, we do have enough for, to make a quorum though, so we shall, can approve the business of the city of Newport. In your packet, you've received a copy of the minutes of previous meeting, regular session, January 9th, 2024. If you've had a take, had a chance to take a look at those, we welcome any deletions, corrections, or revisions. Have none, will entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session from January 9th, 2024, has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And may have like signs. Hearing none, motion carries. Proclaimations and a recognition of citizens rather mayor. At this time, I do not have any. Communications from the city administrator, Mr. James Fencham.
Thank you, Mayor. The first order of business that I have, as the mayor mentioned earlier, Terry Hurst is out recuperating from surgery and Alderman Hansel is in training this week for his work and both were unable to be here. The first request that I had was from city attorney Hurst, who has asked that the charter change, which is on the agenda tonight, be moved to a call meeting at a later date, preferably as early as possible next week. And so, I would respectfully request that the mayor call, a called meeting for next week that works with everybody's schedule. Mr. Hansel said that he, he could, any day next week would work for him. Of course, keep in mind Monday is a holiday and we will be closed on Monday. So Tuesday would be the earliest possible date, just whatever works for everybody. But before we act on that, I would also like to throw into the mix, since Mr. Hansel could not be here tonight, he has asked that we move the discussion of the salary increases for police and fire, which are also on the agenda tonight, that he wants to be here to be in support of both of those measures. And he would appreciate it if everybody would agree to postpone those two items to the call meeting, so he could be here to, to show his support for both of those. So this would serve as public notice that we are having a call meeting, we'll set, the mayor set the date and time, and those three items would be on the agenda. And of course, as you all are well aware, you can only discuss and act upon what the meeting was called for. So this would be the, also the public notice of the three items that would be on the agenda for the call meeting. And so, I've got something else, but Mayor, would you like to go ahead and address that before I move on?
Yes, excuse me. On my schedule, the earliest we could meet would be Tuesday, the 19th, but I also am available the 20th or the 21st. So what is the board's pleasure?
I'm good with Tuesday, the 19th.
Tuesday, the 19th. Alderman Ball.
Is that the 19th?
That's the 20th.
The 20th?
The 20th, sorry.
The 20th, 20th.
Yes.
I could do Tuesday, the 20th.
Yeah, I'm looking at March there, I'm sorry.
Okay, you have the 20th, you have the 19th, I could do the 20th.
Yeah, 19th's a holiday.
Well, I need to be the bad guy, but Tuesday's not good. But any other day is.
The other days are 21st or 22nd.
I can do the 21st.
I can do the 21st.
21st is a Wednesday.
I think 21st would be okay.
Now, Mr., also for your consideration, Attorney Hurst requested that possibly we could have it a little earlier than 5:30, because he will still be in recuperation. And he had talked about that it would be better for him if, if we could have it just a little bit earlier in the day. And so, Vice Mayor Ball, I mentioned it to him earlier, because I knew he has the toughest schedule. And he said that 4:30 is the earliest that he could be here. So I don't know if that would work for everybody else.
Okay. It's okay?
Yes.
Tuesday was the only time I didn't.
Steve, you okay? 4:30 Wednesday. Okay, we set for, call meeting for February 21st, 2024, at 4:30 PM here at this location.
Thanks, sir. The only other thing that I have is, you have a packet there that has been passed out this evening for you to take with you and to look at. And that is an annexation request from Jabbo and Tammy Francis about some of their properties that they would like to have annexed. And so, we will be putting that on the agenda for the next planning commission. And so, but their attorney asked that we hand that out tonight, just so you all will be familiar with it and have this information to, to peruse at your leisure. So we've handed that out, we went through it, there's, everything is in order, everything's in there that should be, maybe even some things it didn't have to be. But no, I'm sure it all, it's, I guarantee you, it's all in order. But that is just to make you aware that that is what that is. And theoretically, if there's no problems, and I don't see why there wouldn't be with the planning commission, it could possibly be on the agenda for the next council meeting. We'll just have to see how quickly the wheels turn on that. But that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, wait a minute. I apologize. And this is one of the important things, it was just down towards, it was down at the bottom. I want to, I want to talk just a little bit about the response that the city had during the recent winter weather that we had in January. The first thing, and I want to give a pat on the back to Ben Hicks and his staff, as always, they were right on top of everything, kept the streets clear, I got lots of positive comments, I'm sure you all did too, from our citizens, from folks out in the county coming to town, you know, and a little funny side note, we got lots of requests for clearing roads outside the city. And sadly, we can't help you with that, you know. You know, follow Jabbo and Tammy's thing, you know, get annexed, man, we'll take care of your road. But, but anyway, they, they did a fantastic job. It was a tough event, it was snow, it was ice, it was more snow, it would thaw, it would freeze, and they just had to keep attacking it. And they did a great job keeping the roads clear, like I say, didn't, wasn't aware of any snags around town, traffic was. The other thing is, Tim Dockery and his staff with the warming center that we did at the community center, we had never taken that task upon us before. And I turned that over to Tim and let him run with it. And he did a fantastic job with very little support the first couple of nights. But once we got, kind of got the snags out and got, got him some help, it went a lot smoother. But he cooked for them, he went and bought food out of his pocket for them, the staff did the same thing, Virginia, some of the others, you know, we, we had, it just, it turned into, I think, a really good thing, and I think that we probably saved a life or two, would be my guess, especially the one Tim found under the bushes up there. But, but I just want to really brag on them, I'm really proud of what they did. And Virginia was able to find a couple of them home, she found some of them some social services, just took it upon herself and did it. And then when feeding my sheep, when they weren't open, we had to switch from a warming station to a shelter. And we had to keep them there day and night for two or three days, and feed them three meals a day. So Tim was constantly having to adapt and overcome adversity with it. And he did it, and I knew he could when I put him in charge of it. But I stayed in contact with him to see, was he getting what he needed, was there anything I could do to help him? We stayed in contact, the mayor, we stayed in contact with him, we had a group text going through the whole thing, and, and we smoothed out the wrinkles and made it work. But it's all a tribute to Tim and his staff, and I'm very proud of the job they did. And he fussed when I told him I was going to talk about that in here, and I told him he'd just have to fuss, because everybody deserves a pat on the back sometimes, and he, he deserved one for this.
And I think we'd be remiss if we left out our representatives from Newport Utilities and the job that they had to do to make that work also. So I know what some of the things they went through to try and keep those, keep the lights on, so good for them, congratulations, guys, for everyone that went, that had to endure through that. That was a very difficult time. We don't, hopefully that's one of those one in 25 years storms, but I'm told it may be one in 10. So in any case, appreciate the effort from everyone.
Thank you, sir, that's all I've got.
Okay. All right, the next item is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Would council like to? Do they have anything? No?
I'll just echo what James and you said, it makes you really proud to be from this community, when you have department heads and leaders that step up during hard times and make things happen. And it makes us all look good and it makes us all feel good, so thank you.
Okay. Item eight is own business or unfinished business, which we have none on the, on the agenda today. Item nine, was, item A was discussion of resolution number 2024-02, charter change, which that discussion has been moved to next week, February 21st, 2024, at 4:30 PM. And as usual, anyone is welcome to attend that meeting, right?
Yes, sir, it's open, yes, sir, it's an open meeting.
Item B, discussion of Newport Police Department salaries. That has been also moved from the agenda to February 21st, 2024, at 4:30 PM. Item C, discussion of Newport Police Department part-time positions, again.
That's still on the, that's, that's still on our agenda, yes, sir.
Okay. Who's, who's leading that discussion?
Chief Lamb will be addressing that, and if I need to chime in, I will.
First of all, thank you all for letting me address this council. As we all know, we're faced with, with problems within the police department as far as staffing goes. We, we're trying to address these so they don't impact the taxpayers of the city of Newport, as well as, as it impacts our patrol. With that being said, we're wanting to form four, four part-time positions within the Newport Police Department at the base salary. With our part-time positioning, what we'll be doing is, we won't be giving any other fringe benefits or any other insurance or anything like that, it'll basically be all post-certified employees, which means they work for other departments and they would come and work for us on a, a status when, when and as needed. We plan on using them for, right now, we're having, we're so short-staffed with employees that we'll have situations which occurred like two days ago, where we have a, a subject that's on vacation and another subject that calls in sick, and it only leaves two people within our department. So therefore, we have to mandate by three. And it'll, it'll save us some money, and it'll save the city money as well to be able to call in some of those officers to help fill those positions. Also, it will give us a good base to hopefully attract some other officers as well. That's all I've got right now.
Well, thank, thank you, Scott. The thing is, you know, and some people think, well, it's a simple process to hire some part-time people, but under our system, it's not. If we hire a part-time person, we can't say, well, let's, let's appropriate the money for one full-time position and get four people to fill it part-time. You can, I mean, you can do that money-wise, but technically, you all have to create a position for each employee. Only city council can create positions. So anybody we hire part-time has to be hired, a position has to be created by the board before we can put those people to work. That's required by law. And so, our, you know, our accounting system, our audit requires it. So as Scott mentioned earlier, it's mandated, it was mandated back in the 90s by city council that the police department could have no less than three officers on duty at all times. When he gets down below two, he's got to make somebody work overtime, now that's time and a half. And so, with, and plus, they're, we're down five people. And so, we're working people to death that we've got, and people are getting burned out and not wanting to come in and work overtime, because they're just bored down. And with these part-time positions, they, we can call these folks in when we need them and pay them a flat rate, it's not time and a half, and so, we can save money instead of having to pay time and a half to everybody that has to come, be called in to work, number one. And number two, we'll quit burning these people out, we're making our regular people work so many hours a week, that it's, where, you know, you kill somebody working 12 hours a day, seven days a week, you can't do it. And so, and plus, you don't want people working who is wore down, their senses are gone, the reaction times down, it's a dangerous job, and it's obvious from what happened in Blount County this week. And so, people need to be sharp-minded and have their, their wits about them and be on alert. If you're tired and sleepy, that, I know, I did it for years, and you're, you're not where you need to be. And so, Scott came and talked to me about this, I think it's a good idea, every other department I know has the ability to do this, and I, I think it's a good idea, and, you know, it's, but it doesn't work like, like Tim has part-time positions, we call seasonal in the summer, and they work, each one of them works 20 hours a week or 26, whatever. This is not the same kind of thing. This is going to be an as-needed thing. It's not going to be, well, we know this cat's going to work every Tuesday for 10 hours and this, you know, it's not that, this is just as-needed. And one question that came up, and I want to make very clear, is that as we fill these positions that we have emptied, the need for these part-time people will go away. We are not trying to, to just add people through a part-time mechanism. This is only to keep three people working so we can meet that mandate that we have a minimum of three officers on the road at all times, and not burn our people out. That's all it is. And once we get our, get back to staff, and we, the only time we would ever need them would be if there was a, some kind of crazy catastrophic event, another Klan rally, or, you know, something of that nature, before we would have to utilize them, hopefully. But in today's times, we've been, we've been working shorthanded since before the pandemic. And so, that's, you know, that's a lot of years to be dancing around trying to keep a schedule filled. And I, I think this is the only way that we've got to have a little bit of a safety net when we're shorthanded, to be able to bring people in and quit just wiring our people out. And so, but we have to ask for four positions, because that's just required by the, the bookkeeping end of it. And it's, you know, one person might work 20 hours a month, one might not work any, you know, it's just as-needed. And where, you know, and so, you need, you got to have more than one or two people, because what if neither one of them can come? If you need somebody, the more you got to pull from, the better likelihood you got of one of them being available when you need them. So that's to have a pool of four people you can draw on when you need them. It's not to have them all scheduled every week to be working, that's not how it works.
And some of the logistics of it also, the reason we're going with four, is because hopefully, when we get new applicant, when we get applicants for these positions, they'll probably work in a 12-hour shift where they normally work anyway. So we're wanting two to pull from, from each location, from each side of the shift, so that's the, another reason for the four.
And we've had four people express interest.
Yes, yeah.
So we'd like to latch on to every one of them, because we've got four that have said they're interested, that work at other departments, that have said if we ever do part-time, they'd be interested in coming here and doing some of the work. So we want to take advantage, we've got four interested, we'd like to be able to pull from those four.
Okay, council, you've heard the presentation and the discussion, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to hire the four part-time.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then, it's been properly seconded to approve the hiring of four part-time positions. Excuse me, I think we probably need a roll call on this, Montana.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it'll help us a lot.
Item D was discussion of Newport Fire Department salaries, which has been moved to February 21st, 24, at 4:30 PM here at City Hall. Item E, discussion of Newport Fire Department part-time positions.
And this, and I'll let Jeremy do his, his thing, but just to get, to let you know, this is the exact same thing, okay? But with the fire department, he's got four in school, he's got one out for surgery, and he's got three coming up for maternity leave, one of which is the maternity, is the mother, two of them are the father. But, but he's, yeah. It's kind of like twins, you know, he's working there and then to be a. But I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't make fun, but, but anyway, he's, you know, he's not short people, but he's about to be, I mean, he's not got empty positions, but he's fixing to be short people bad, and so, but go ahead.
Yeah, I've got four for 12 weeks, it's going to be gone, that started Monday. And actually, we've got, one's had surgery today, another one is scheduled for an MRI, the 21st, that's going to be probably off as that way too. So, yeah, once again, it's just to help, help fill the, help fill the time, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on, and, you know, we've been through this with, with COVID, you know, that's going to, so people have either overtime, comp time, and those things that we're having to spend, and it's hard to, it's hard to let people use their comp time, when you have, you know, you've got six out at, at one time, so.
Jeremy, where would you pull your part-time?
Well, and now, I've asked for a little more, mine, mine will be six, but like I say, that's a pool, the, the six positions will just be a pool that I'll go through. Well, hopefully, I can get from the county, fire department, Jefferson City, Sevier County, and some of those places too. I haven't been able to work on it as, quite as much as the PD has, but, you know, there's people that do that, that already do that and will able to do that. So, and their schedules are 24 hours, and they work that, so it, you know, that's kind of why I went with six, it may take a, you know, take a little bit more to, to get to fill those positions in that way.
Okay. You have anything?
No, I, I, that's why I said, it's just same thing again, there's no need in throwing it all out there twice, but it's the exact same situation, just a little different. Scott's is empty positions, and Jeremy's is illness, pregnant, and in school.
Well, and I have to say, for the four years, you know, in a couple of months, I've hired 10, 10 to 11 employees, so it's, the workforce is still, I've had retiring and things that are coming up, and, and I've got a lot that, that may be coming up on the 55 that may want to take advantage of that too. So, you know, down the road, this is.
Thank you, sir, the four years, and they're trying to blame me.
No, they stayed with him longer, I didn't know what it was, so.
Well, you had something to do with that, too.
Yeah.
Okay, council, you've heard the presentation and discussion, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve the creation of these six part-time positions for the fire department.
I'll say that.
Okay, have a motion on the board then to approve the hiring of six part-time firefighter positions, it's been properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item F is consideration of resolution number 2024-03 to close and abandon Oliver Cromwell Drive.
We don't need it anymore, we have a new street that we can take instead. Okay. Is everybody, did everybody remember this one when I brought it up? Okay, cool.
Uh-oh, I don't think Randy does.
No, I was waiting for, did he have anything else?
No, I, I accept your questions.
I'll move to do it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, we're gonna, so for the record, we're gonna give up Oliver Cromwell Drive, because there's been a new street constructed parallel on the opposite side of the building that Oliver Cromwell runs past. So we're going one-to-one for a street that is, in my opinion, constructed better than Oliver Cromwell, because it's got proper drainage to get the water under it to the other side.
Okay, all right, you've heard the resolution, what's the board's pleasure?
I'll still make that motion, I'll say that.
Okay, we have a motion then on board to consideration of resolution number 2024-03 to close and abandon Oliver Cromwell Drive. It has been properly seconded, we need a roll call.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. I see he's still standing there, so I guess we'll move on to consideration of resolution number 2024-04 to accept and name a newly adopted street.
Okay, now we're down one street, so we got to get another one. Luckily, there's one there, and I asked the folks at Old Smokey if they had a preference on what to name it, and they recommended Heat Street. I didn't ask for an explanation, I don't know what that means as far as anything else, but we don't have a Heat Street, so it'll work if heat, like, like hot, heat, yeah. Heat Street. Does roll off the tongue, I suppose.
Steve Smith.
Yeah, well, I threw, I threw different things out, they came back to me with that.
Okay, you, you heard the resolution for 2024-04 to accept and name a newly adopted street, preferably Heat Street. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve Heat Street.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve the resolution number 2024-04 to accept and name a newly adopted street in the name of Heat Street. It has been properly seconded. We, please accept, please signify your acceptance by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And may have like signs. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
And consideration of resolution number 2024-05, authorizing equipment price increase for grant for the fire department.
Okay, this is, this community block development grant, which we started in 2022, so I'm getting all these prices together, all this stuff's going on, so in November of 2022, I could get a 23 Chevrolet Silverado truck. And I had no idea how slow that the wheels turn to get this grant going. And as we kept getting further along, further along, 23 Chevrolets sell out, I can't get a 23 Chevrolet no more, I have to go to a 24. So there is a price increase in that, as there is, as there is in everything now, so I believe it was, it was around 38, 39,000, and it goes to 45,951 for the same truck that's in a 2024. Now, this will be, this will be purchased on the grant, it's just because the price increased, I have to bring it before you guys to do that, and I'm afraid there's going to be a lot more I'm going to have to bring in front of you guys too. A lot of stuff I've got quoted is going to have to go up, so that's kind of where we are with this.
Okay, you've heard the presentation, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve resolution number 2024-05, authorizing equipment price increase for a grant for the fire department, has been properly seconded. Please, roll call, please.
Alderwoman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item I, consideration of returning industrial park property to county.
Okay, Mayor, what happened here, and it's kind of a convoluted story, but nevertheless, for the record. Back when we were removed from the, the old animal shelter and had to go out on our own, we looked at alternatives on what we were going to try to do. We had a building we could renovate, get, stay in operation with our animal control, we did that, and we have made, we've stayed in, we've stayed in operation since. Our goal was to build a new facility similar to the old one, but one that would be ours and that we couldn't get booted out of again. And so, the county stayed in a contract with the Humane Society, and they took their animals for a, a, a longer time than they did ours. So finally, the county kind of got the same treatment that we did. Excuse me. And so, they found themselves without anywhere to go. Well, we, we were trying to identify a spot to build our facility on, and everything we were finding was way out and hard to get to, didn't have utilities. And so, we, when, when Mayor Mathis got, was actually running for mayor, I talked to him about the possibility of the seating county consolidating animal control into one entity and being under one roof and going together on it. And he thought that was a good idea. And I was modeling that after the setup they've got in Green County. That's what they did over there. And Lisa and I, and I think Tina went, we went over there and looked at their facility and we agreed that's what we wanted to do here. And so, Rob was on board of that, and so, we identified an acre down in the old industrial park that we thought would be a good spot to put the, the building, and it was out of the flood zone. And it was flat, it had a, had a road going right by it, it was, you know, it was really a perfect location. And so, I, I had, I had an old map, and it's my fault, I guess, you know, because I did it. But I had an old map that showed that that property belonged to the county because that was where they were looking at building the, the Justice Center. And so, I thought that they owned that whole section right there where the Justice Center was going to go. So I asked, would it be possible for them to let us have an acre in the corner of that property that would be just across from the spec building that Old Smokey has now? And, and, you know, Gary was on the board at that time, and we talked about it and he kind of run it by some of the others, and they said, oh, yeah, that'd be great. But now, I was just describing it as the corner because it, it was the corner. But unbeknown to me, my map was old, and the county had sold that section to Old Smokey. And so, the county gave me what I asked for. I asked for the corner, and they gave me the corner. But the corner was not where I thought it was. The corner was actually a few hundred yards farther south and off a bank and in the flood zone. And it was going to take, and, and they approved it, we, I had it surveyed by Randall Freeman, and he called to me, he said, I got it surveyed, I went down there, and lo and behold, where, where I wanted, there's no posts, but way over here in the middle of the field coming back there, there's four posts. So I called him and I said, hey, man, what's the deal? And he said, well, that's the corner. And I said, no, that's not the corner, but it was the corner. So, under a crazy happenstance, I got what I asked for, but it wasn't what I thought I was getting. I got a piece that it's, it's not feasible to build on. And so, I immediately called Michael McCarter with Old Smokey, and I said, here's the bill. I've got this acre over here that I can't use. You've got an acre over here that I'd like to have. What would be the possibility of me swapping this acre to, to you for this acre? Because it's just in opposite corners of the property. Oh, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. Well, it was. We, we got drug out, drug out, drug out. Finally, he said that they're going to build a 500,000 square foot wirehouse in the middle of that property, and the engineer wants, does not want that to be there. Okay, I don't see what it hurts, but what do I know? I'm no engineer. So then he started offering me alternatives, and I kept going and looking at them, and I'd take Ben, I'd take Lisa, and we'd go evaluate them. And, and that went nowhere. And so, I told Rob back in early December, he, he was regularly asking me, what, what was the, the update on it, what was the status? And I was telling him, you know, what, play-by-play, what I was dealing with. And so, I told him, I said, now that that, and it took months and months and months before that other corner got taken off the table because he, it takes him forever to get back a hold of you, and then when he does, he still says he's still waiting on an answer, and so it just gets drug out forever. And so, when he finally told me that that wasn't going to be possible, I told Rob that they could have that acre back if they wanted it. Well, it's getting, about before the holidays, we get into the holidays and nobody, I didn't think anymore about it, and I'd, I'd say he didn't think anymore about it. And so, they ended up, I think in January maybe, having a CLB meeting, and it got to be, Rob wasn't there, he was at a mayor's conference in Gatlinburg, but it got to be a little bit of a contentious issue with the CLB that if we're not going to use that, we should give it back. And I'm in complete agreement, and I'd already told Rob they could have it back, but this, this, for whatever reason, it got misunderstood or misinterpreted or something, I don't know. But Rob hadn't paced that along, and so the CLB wasn't aware that, that we had already talked, that he and I had already talked about that. But they had a public safety meeting, and the sheriff was there complaining about how he needs some relief, and he does. I've been telling him forever, they need to find him a temporary solution like we did to we can get this thing built. But that's, you know, that's, that's, and he's been, he's trying to do that, and that's what he was doing in front of the CLB that night. And that's when it came up that, well, that we're dragging our feet and we need to give that acre back. And so, we're not dragging our feet. We're still, and I talked to Rob about this after the fact, you know, we're still committed to that. But, I mean, you know, we, we can't make things happen always. We can try to make them happen, but this is, you know, this has just been a convoluted thing for a year now, and there's nobody any more frustrated about it than I am because I'm the ones been dealing with it. But I am still committed to doing a joint animal control program, and Rob is, and the sheriff is, we've all talked about it. And so, I've got a meeting with Rob next week, and that's on the agenda with some other things that we're still going to talk about. But after giving that big lone rigamarole, the, the point on the agenda is that I would request that you all return that acre to the county that they generously donated. I don't want to take anything away from them. They gave us what we asked for. This is not on them, by no means. They absolutely gave us what we asked for, but what we asked for wasn't what we thought it was. And so, we got what we asked for, but it wasn't what we were after. And it's just, you know, I tried, I tried to make it work, I tried to, you know, swap it out with Old Smokey to get something better, and they don't want it. McCarter told me, he said, I don't want it. And so, we can't use it, there's no point in us hanging on to it, it was given to us, I'm all for giving it back, and that's what I'm asking tonight, that we vote to return that property to them. I've already spoken with Jeff Green and asked him to be prepared to draw up the paperwork because I'm confident that it would happen tonight. And so, he's, all he's waiting on is for the green light to say it was voted in tonight, approved, and he will start on it right away to get it returned to them. And I apologize for any misunderstanding that they may have had, and I'm not sitting here trying to, and I'm certainly not bad-mouthing them, I'm just explaining what happened. Because Rob wasn't there that night to explain to them that he and I had discussed this already. And so, it was just a, kind of a lack of communication on that. But there were some comments that got back to me by some individuals I didn't necessarily appreciate because they questioned the, the city's motives. And the city has no hidden motive, no ulterior motive. We've been very transparent and open about the process all the way down the line. You all have asked about it along, and I've told you the history and what we've done, and we're trying to do, and I've done the same thing with Rob. And so, maybe this will make everybody happy, but we don't need it. We can't do anything with it, we don't need it. We appreciate the gesture, but I'd like, I'd like y'all to give it back to them.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to give it back. Second.
All right, we have a motion then on the board to authorize Jeff Green to draw up the paperwork to donate the property, industrial park property back to the county. It has been properly seconded. We will need a roll call on this one too.
Honor Woman Luanna Oninger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item J is consideration of authorization for the Police Department to apply for Tennessee Highway Safety Office High Visibility Grant.
Yeah, thank you all again for letting me address the council. This is our, it's an annual grant that is given to us by the Tennessee Department of Safety. It's a $5,000 grant, non-matchable by the city. And $4,000 of it will go towards equipment, and $1,000 will go towards overtime where we can enforce DUI laws, speeding, things like that. We get it every year.
What's the board's pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to, to approve authorization for the Police Department to apply for Tennessee Highway Safety Office High Visibility Grant has been properly seconded. Well, this is the money we need a roll call.
Honor Woman Luanna Oninger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Item K, this is kind of unique, discussion of 2024 CCHS prom behind City Hall.
I'll let Clay kind of give you the pitch, but he reached out to us about possibly, because of the construction at the auditorium, and I'm sure a thousand other reasons, but doing the prom somewhere downtown, and the ideal location's going to be out back now. Full disclosure, and probably what if the council's, we don't need a vote, we just kind of need a nod and a go, go, go get it, guys kind of suggestion, but the routes to the festival that the folks came in and asked about doing, same date, they would like to do the prom. So probably what we'll have to do is sit down with them and figure out timing and space if it's something that's the council's pleasure. And then, so Clay, if you want to give your elevator pitch for it.
I mean, just as much as anything else, we don't have a space, we've been using the high school auditorium, and it's just not going to be available because of construction. Morristown does something very similar between, with Morristown East and West, and they use their downtown area. I've also had the opportunity to speak with some local business owners as well as Lynn at the Chamber, who is going to work out a situation so that hopefully we can promote Newport at the same point in time, utilize, you know, our new downtown businesses that we have that would be open an extra amount of time. It's just a way to keep, for a lot of our kids, they're just not able to go to Gatlinburg or Pigeon Forge, and we want to keep that here as local as much as possible. And so, your help in that particular realm would be greatly appreciated.
What's the board's pleasure?
I love the idea of having the prom downtown. I was following Hamblin County's last year, and I thought it turned out phenomenally. It was absolutely beautiful, and if we could do something like that downtown, I think it's a great idea.
I would just like to keep them here.
Yeah, they'll be safer here.
I mean, that's what I, that's what I think, and whenever we moved the prom kind of back here about 10 years ago, that was one of the things. We did speak with Cosby about that, they had already made their particular plan, assuming if this goes well, I'm not sure that it would be here every year, but we would like to do, alternate that, and then try to do that with them in conjunction and just have everyone be able to come here. Because it's just so much easier for so many of our kids to be able to stay in town.
Absolutely. I love the idea.
You have the permission of Newport City Council?
Yeah, and once we hammer out the details, we'll bring you a full detailed proposal of exactly what you're agreeing to, because the, the B plan might be, if for some reason it didn't work, and the need for tenants, I guess, would be to close down and swine, because that's what Morristown does, they close down the main, and then have a common area out there. Anyway, we'll figure it out, we'll bring you some.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay. Item 10, huge purchases and expenses, of which they are not on the agenda today. Comments from citizens. Is anyone here that would wish to be heard? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.